Instagram who imitates a cat, oh he'll just vocalize what a cat would say. It's pretty hilarious. And when he can't get some stuff out. Yeah, so I guess we have to ask Dylan tonight how he's doing town meeting day. Because that was meeting since at nine o'clock as well. Isn't enough for him to be there. I think he told him it wasn't, oh no. We're gonna open the March first two thousand twenty-three select board meeting. Do we want amendments to the agenda? What two? I have, um. Uh, we need to add signing the, um. Blood loan, we received some money from Pima to pay it down. And the other thing is the school street bridge, um. They signed the grant agreement today, sent it. Um, I emailed it to you all, just approval to go ahead and sign that. You can put it on the select board review, those two items. Nothing else, um. Then we'll have approval of the minutes of February fifteenth. With the motion.
Make the motion, first amendment of February fifteenth.
We have a second?
All second.
We have any further discussions, corrections, additions? Okay, then all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close now. Stay so carried. Comments from the community?
If we have Monica.
No comments except for hi.
Hi. And they'll do correspondent, only thing I see here, oh I see two things, I see, um. An email, um, to Belinda from Laura Williams. She's reaching out to us on behalf of the Division of Addictions. Um. It's an organization that helps vulnerable Vermont residents who are addicted to drugs or alcohol locate proper treatment options. Alcoholism and drug addiction are terrible crises affecting all ages in our communities from teenagers to senior citizens. Finding treatment facilities that are able to understand the underlying cause of the addiction. They're able to cure an individual so as to prevent any relapse is often a very hard task. So they're basically asking if it's possible if we put a link on our website to their organization. Do we know anything about Drug Treatment Division?
I, I did, I mean, I've gone to their link, it looks like it's a a list of resources which I think are probably good for the community. Um, and so I think this is just a request under our resource tab.
Right.
To have this.
I just want to verify that this organization is legit, that's all.
They have a website.
It appears to be.
No. We. I don't know if anybody has gotten help from us. That's why I'm serious, it's like.
Oh.
Yeah.
Vermont, okay. So what's the board's view on?
I don't know, I think it's a good idea for more of those resources. Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Something you can do, Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I mean, I gave, I brought this down, um, this is an F Y I. This is from the Forest Committee, um, that went to, um, one, one fifty-three uh, to get a logo made, and so it's a bill for two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, now the Forest Committee does not have a line item this year, they don't have a budget. Um, looks like the work's already been done, so this may have come under eighteen budget.
Well, is it a, uh, money goes on like one of them?
I really don't know what it is, this came from Maria.
So we should actually let them know that they need to kind of get permission to spend money and starting July first, they have so much in, um. It probably is only two hundred and fifty dollars and sure can get it to one, it is a beautiful logo.
I didn't know if he wanted it under select board or if he wanted it under town properties, like buildings.
Well, I'm gonna go under buildings, um.
But I, it's.
Don't we have miscellaneous anywhere?
You do, under select board.
But I just was putting on there miscellaneous.
Okay.
The idea of that was for letterheads. And hopefully when they get the signage up here, if it's built through.
I thought it wasn't on their newsletter, their newsletter was really nice. I, I, I spent a long time looking at that logo actually. I liked it a lot.
They have a professional, but they wanted to have that added to the signage whenever the parking area and everything gets set up. So we get there, you know us.
Right. They just needed to let us know they were spending money they didn't have. They will have money in July, that's all. But it is in August. Okay, we're waiting for, uh, two guests from Craftsbury who aren't here. I actually called Bruce to verify that, to say we have six ten, but, um.
Well, excuse me, how it needs to end.
We could jump to the report.
Right, want, want to do your, um. Report's report?
Okay, um.
Right.
Yes. Uh, so the mowing, uh, the request for mowing bids will be running in the news and citizen and starting this week, this Friday, if I'm up in. Um, we did specify the different areas that need to be mowed. Um, we did not, um, put the North Wilka Ball Field on it because, um, as Linda, I think correctly pointed out, is that probably is a separate bid for someone that does that kind of thing. Um, so we will, we will be putting big, our big request out for, um, brush again on the North Wilka Ball Field and, uh, the transfer station.
And I meant to mention to you that, um, actually we're having that meeting in April. Um, that you would need to make sure you coordinate it with any kind of construction that might be going on restoration there. I don't know what's gonna go, what's gonna go on, but we'll find out in April.
For the transfer station?
No.
Oh, I know what you mean, right, right.
Facility.
Right. Right.
Just keep that in mind.
Yeah, that meeting is, it's an onsite meeting in April. Um, with a quick comment on University, Interform Company, they seem to be um, that they have been serving town for quite some time, but all of a sudden they're not picking up one of them anymore. So I've been in the process of trying to contact this company. Uh, they did respond today and they passed it off to their Nassau, um, branch. Um, so we're trying to figure out what's going on.
So they don't pick it up until they drop off?
They drop off, but they won't pick anything up.
Oh, please.
And we don't know why.
Is it because the guys weren't there?
They've always.
They always drop it off even if they're not there, but they haven't been picking it up. It's a new person.
Is that true? So anyway, there's a flaw and I guess, so we're trying to get to the bottom of it. In the meantime, we're trying to influence. Um, the, uh, Dylan is, um, working on getting our road crews um, for the upcoming season. Uh, also oats on the North Wilka Road for patch paving. Um, you're gonna get a couple of bids on that as we apply for, uh, class two grants. Except, uh, um, seventy-four School Street, uh, that's the trailer right down here. Apparently the, um, Vermont Housing approved the tax request from this individual. And, um, so we protested that and we got pretty quick response from them. And they, uh, have now, the general counsel for Vermont Housing, uh, emailed us and told us that they have uh, changed their minds, they've not denied the, um, the request.
Right.
Um, so where we stand now is, I think Belinda can probably talk that better than I can. I believe the property now defaults to the.
The person who bought it in a tax sale.
The tax sale purchaser. And that individual's gonna have to, um, you know, turn it over, sell it, whatever we don't know.
It's named as Gaden Burge and he has bought a few properties, broken in the past, he hasn't ended up with any of them. But he doesn't usually like to hold on too long, so he'll probably start us up.
Yeah. And our potential buyers do that. That may be, sure, right. One of the buyers, I know was interested in carrying down the trailer and improving it a bit. Um, so anyway, that's where that's been. I could probably be a couple of weeks before we really know. Um, website improvements, um, Bradley Horstman, um, who's a relatively new resident, interested in working with town. Um, he has background in web development specifically using, um, the system that we have. And, uh, he has volunteered to help, um, refresh some of the, some of the, uh, the physical layout of the screens, uh, just to improve visibility, improve interface, uh, improve kind of the, the user experience on it. Um, which I think is, is terrific, we have that resource. If we were to go through collaborative instead, we would be in the many thousands. Um, truck, truck problems, um. Unfortunately, Gillie's truck has been giving up, um, it's had some little troubles with the dump side, um, so gotta put in a fair amount of money to, um, be welding to get that truck back up to speed. Uh, at the last snowstorm, the plowing was not as efficient as we had. Yeah, it's typical, but that's because of this, this truck. Um, so it's like deja vu, and another truck is floating. Um, Viking prices, uh. The Viking is a supplier of parts and they work with the, uh, truck body, um, and have they are really the only vendor that we have. Um, and their pricing for our last purchase for plow blades uh, was almost double what it was last year. Um, so, uh, the road crew's been having a discussion with the Elmore Road Crew, um, about, uh, a supplier that's based in New Hampshire and, uh, they will be, and, and I think that Dylan would also like to do, uh, bids between the two suppliers and see if we can keep our pricing down. There's also a bid out for roadside mowing, um, last year, Alan.
William.
William, Bill Allen, I just did, did it, um, and Dylan was really happy with that. And so he may be available again, but we'll have to get, uh, a full set of bids. And finally, uh, again Bradley Horstman, uh, given his background, um, I had gotten a call from the Wild Fiber, um, from our rep to looking for an alternate, uh, board member, um, as they build out their boards. Um, and I suggested Bradley might be interested, uh, so they did get together, uh, they talked about the responsibility. And, uh, Andy thought that was, uh, just a great fit. Um, and the Wild Fiber thinks it's a great fit, so, um, we have a, uh, a nomination document here, and this is really for the select board, uh, to validate and accept, uh, Bradley as an alternate board now with Wilka. I, I would recommend it, so. Pretty hard talent to find. And this, if, if we're all good with that, if this would go within the, we'll see. And that's what I have there. And it looks like we have Joe on the line, yeah. That's very.
So do you want to launch him to appoint Bradley Horstman to the little Wild Fiber now?
Yes.
Okay. Making that motion?
I will make that motion. All second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so then. Great. What shall we do? Ian Hardy, you want to go next?
We want to watch, no, if you were.
Um, hi Joe, you want to unmute yourself?
There he is.
So Joe has sent me a couple of emails, he has, um, sent a request in. Um, I will let him explain that.
Um, so I am, uh, Joe Houston, I'm the facilities director for Orleans Southwest Supervisor Union, so I'm in charge of all the facilities projects for all of the schools in the S U. Um, one of the things that we're looking at trying to do with some of our ESR funds is to, um, get standby power generators at all of the schools that don't currently have them. Um. The way that, the way that our education is delivered now with, with the uh, need for computers and the network and everything being tied together. When there's a power outage, it has a pretty severe, uh, disruption to the class workday. Um, plus it keeps our ventilation system running so we can keep fresh, clean air into the classrooms. So, uh, Craftsbury is one school that, that we're doing that at, um, Wilka would be one and Hardwick Elementary is the third. And we're, we've, uh, been reaching out to towns to see if there would be any support with some of their ARPA funds for contributing towards the cost of those generators. Um, based on some prior projects that I worked on in my previous district. Uh, a generator the size of what we think it would take to run Wilka Elementary is probably gonna be in the sixty to ninety thousand dollar range. Um, I have a engineer that's gonna start specing that out for us in the next month or so. Uh, so I'm here tonight to ask if, if the Wilka Select Board would, would entertain providing some support. I believe Craftsbury has it on their agenda to discuss a, a ten or fifteen thousand dollar appropriation at, at their next meeting. Um. And not, not to throw Jim and Bruce under the bus, but, uh, that's, that's why I'm here is, is to see if Wilka would be interested in that and, and one of the things that would go along with that is, um, you know, access to the town as a, as an emergency shelter or, or, you know, meeting space in a time of need that that support comes with some, some privileges, obviously, to, to utilize the facility in a, it. Um, especially in a time when there's, there's power outage widespread around town or something like that.
So you're asking us to use ARPA funds?
Uh, that, that seems to be the most, uh, i- if you, if you had extra funds kicking around somewhere else that you preferred to use, we would, but I, I follow town government enough to know that that's not usually the case, especially at this point in the fiscal year. Um, and knowing that towns are, are, uh, you know, have been given the ARPA funds and, and have entertained different uses for them that seem like a logical, uh, possible source for them. And, and what we're, what we're trying to do is ensure that we can get the right equipment into each of the buildings and, and not have to leave anyone out and, um, based on our budgeting, we're, we're kind of right at the line and this would help make sure that we can, we can provide what we need.
I'm just curious where the other funds are coming from? The regular school budget?
Uh, no, we, we're, we've appropriated a bunch of our ESR, um, COVID, COVID response funds toward it. Um, I can't remember the exact dollar amount off the top of my head and it changes as we have other projects going through as well, but, um, that was one of the things that we felt was, was a important and, um, approved use for those funds, they have to be, they have to be in response to or to help prevent, uh, COVID and other disease, so the, the being able to keep the ventilation system operational whenever the power goes out is, is a key component of, of why that we are able to use those funds for that. And that frees up, uh, frees up our local budget funds to be able to do other building projects that we need to when, when possible.
Do you know how many people you could shelter there?
Um, the building is eighteen thousand square feet, I mean, there's eight, ten classrooms, I mean, you could put, I think you could, if you had to in a crunch with the gym and all the classrooms, you could get a couple hundred people in, in cots in there if that was a necessity. It would be pretty, it would be pretty crowded at that point, but, um, it would hold quite a few and it has, and we have the full kitchen uh, facility to be able to prepare meals as well.
You have any other questions? Do you like that, Joe?
Beg your pardon?
I was asking the rest of the board if they had any further questions for you.
So you asked Craftsbury for ten and fifteen, are you asking the same of Wilka?
Uh, yeah.
Spitting, we approved the last one.
You did, no.
Yeah.
It is the highest point sort of in this town right now. From the river.
All right, and so are you dependent on, I think you mentioned three different buildings. Are you dependent on participation from all three? Um, in other words, if Wilka were to participate and Craftsbury participated, but the third chose not to. Uh, does that have a negative effect on your project or?
No, what, what would end up happening in that case is that we would probably have to take some money from that school's uh, building fund to cover any, any shortfall that we don't come up with. Um, we're, we're pretty committed to trying to make this happen, I think it's a, we think it's a, an equity issue that, um, Hazen Union has a generator, Woodbury Elementary School has a generator, uh, Lakeview Elementary and Greensboro has a generator. So with half the district having that access and that stability, it, it kind of puts the kids in the schools that don't at a disadvantage and we wanna, we wanna eliminate that disparity.
Right, right. You know, the other thing is we, we do have a generator here in this building and this is actually our emergency shelter. Uh, but it's pretty inadequate for a major problem.
We know.
I will two hundred, we don't have a kitchen big enough to feed big people, so, uh, as an, and we're in a flood zone. Uh, so the, the alternative is attractive, I think.
So Joe, this is Kurt Dylanson, how is this going to, is it gonna be on diesel or is it gonna be on a propane?
Um, I believe it would probably be spec'd to be a diesel generator. The, the engineer that I've worked with in the past has said that especially when you get to what I anticipate the demand for, for Wilka being, um, to get a propane engine large enough to provide that amount of power, the cost gets pretty substantial and the maintenance on it is higher where the diesel, the diesel power generator in that size range is, is more affordable and tends to be a more, um, low maintenance op, option, uh, and they come with a it's a twenty-four to thirty-six hour tank that's part of the base of the unit, so the fuel is stored right on the unit in a double walled tank. And there's no extra, there's no extra, other than just what the footprint of the generator unit itself is.
And who's gonna be paying for the fuel?
That would be a school expense. You know, the, it would fire up once a week for about ten or fifteen minutes to lubricate the engine, make sure everything, all the switch gears running right, that's automatically done. Um, and so we would just have it on a, on a regular delivery that they top it up when they deliver fuel to the school or on another, on another route. And we, we are prepared to, uh, we are prepared to absorb that operating cost into our budget because it is gonna support the school. You know, even last, was it Thursday or Friday when we lost power for a couple of hours? And we're all, all of the maintenance and, and operation staff are sending messages back and forth about who has power, where and when. Trying to make sure that all the buildings are back up and running and that our heating systems are, are operational. Um, if we'd lost power for two or three hours on that Friday and Saturday night that it was twenty-four below zero with high wind, we would have been looking at scrambling around to start unthawing pipes, because it, even that long without heat would have been a big issue, so there's some, there's some, uh, insurance and, and other issues other than just maintaining the school during school hours that, that kind of go along with it that we're excited to have that option for.
Anything else? There one, one big comment, uh, to, uh, most of.
Well, I, my personal opinion is that this is a good use of our ARPA funds. Um, it, uh, it makes sense and we're in a period where we do have some ARPA funds to support this, so uh, my personal opinion is that this would be money well spent. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we, uh, that we can make, if we can commit these. Uh, that we can make, if we commit these funds, that we can also expect that the generator does go in. Uh, that's why I asked the question about the three schools. I would be happy to make a motion. Uh, to allocate. Fifteen thousand of ARPA funds. Uh, to the supervisory.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a first and a second to, uh, motion to. Provide Wolkett Elementary School fifteen thousand of ARPA funds to be used solely for a generator. Purchase of a generator. Any further discussion? Brothers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. So carrying. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and, uh. I look forward to, uh, getting it all up and running and and having you come visit and and check it out.
Stand around the generator, it'd be great.
I have just one question. Where would this generator be located?
In all likelihood, I believe on the backside of the school is where the power service comes up the hill. And I think. That it probably would go. Somewhere along that backside. We'll have to look with the engineer. There, he and I will discuss. How much switch gear is necessary and how much space that'll take up, whether we can do that inside or out. Whether there's room for the generator next to the building, or if it needs to be on the opposite side of the driveway. We try to get them. So that we have the least amount of wire to run from the generator to the. To the building so that we don't have the the added cost of the excavation and conduit and all of that, but. Um, I think it would be somewhere in that, along that backside of the building. Where where Phil parks his bus and the the shed is and those things.
Well, my only concern is being diesel. When you get as cold as thirty below, it gels. The fuel. So if it's not in a building heated. You'll run into issues.
My experience is that 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 will, we'll need to make sure that the fuel is properly treated to prevent that. And I think that there. Also is a option for. An automatic heater that go, electric heater that goes on the unit. There, there, there's power running from the building to the generator whenever the generator's not running. And I think an a block heater that keeps the engine warm and and that keeps that tank. At a temperature such that the fuel can't gel up is part of the. Cold weather application package that goes along with it. I know that, I know that the generator that we had at Albany School. Has a block heater to keep that engine. It's a, you know, automatic, it's automatic to the outside air temperature that it comes on when it needs to and shuts off when it should. Um, to keep that engine warm so that when the power goes out. It can fire immediately and it's not, it's not cold.
Great.
And thank you.
We look forward to it.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
We'll move on to the North Wolkett Road, uh, Bruce Urie and I'm sorry for getting a name.
Jim Jones.
Jim Jones. Um, co-chairs of the Craftsbury Select Board. We wanted to talk to you about the North Wolkett Road and, um. See if you wanted to work with us. I'm not sure where where it will go, um. We just can no longer, um. Keep up with the road, the maintenance on the road with our town budgets.
Uh, reverse, firstly, we got the. Appropriately named.
Right, we've been doing that. We have a big rep coming up. Again, I guess our concern is mostly, um. The base. The pa- the paving, um. And the heavy trucks that are, that are on it. We don't really feel it's there, the. Trucks are using that to cut through instead of using the state highways.
And you can't get a good pace on that road.
Ever.
It's a while. Steve said we'll all spend lots of money.
Right, the road was never designed to take that kind of trend. Uh, and our, uh, roughly, um, I can say that our. Uh, is about a third of our overall material cost goes to that road. And so it's it's costing, it costs the town a lot of money to maintain it. Um, I think there's there's some safety issues on it. Um, we've had a Pepsi truck go off the side at one point. Um, and, uh. Yeah, it is, I don't know if you've got a chance to read the correspondence we had with V-Trans. Uh, because we did, uh. Ask our our legislators to to get involved and and to help us. Uh, we've got a. A pretty curt answer back from V-Trans. About their their lack of interest in our problem, uh. But I just think that's the beginning. It's a long term, and if we can get support from. Others that are, that are, uh, affected by this road, specifically Craftsbury, um, and. We can, we can just build a better, uh. Committee, um, and keep this in front of of V-Trans. The, the. Dan always pointed out that, you know, fifteen A, fifteen C. Those were town roads at one point, and somehow, something, you know. So that's kind of what we're looking for. What is that? He, um. And I think that the the response we got back from V-Trans was basically saying, we don't have any questions. Uh, but that doesn't mean next year. No, it could be enforcement. Kind of want to keep the pressure on. Um, we've had the shim that road. Uh, at the town's expense, and it's already starting to crumble again.
And anywhere near, I mean, we have a ten-year cycle, and you can't get any more than a ten-year cycle now. I see you, you drive the tar, try the tar off racks if you have, oh, okay, maybe that's gonna work. That didn't, you know, you didn't feel that much either?
Yeah, I didn't. I personally do, but it was, it it preserved it for a few more years longer. That steel crack.
It didn't help for a few years.
Yeah, because the water didn't get. But then it crumbled another, it means.
And so I, I mean, the other thought that we've been kind of tossing around is, you know, if we can't get any response. Um, and and we do have our V-Trans, a regional rep coming in April to to talk about. How V-Trans can help us. Uh. Preserve the road, but we know from past experience that just won't be enough money in these ramps to really. Make a big difference. Um, so, uh, we have tossed around the idea of, uh. Closing the road to through the tractor trailer traffic. And there's always the question of how do you, um, enforce something like that? Uh, and and a thought is, you know, if we look at the, first off, in in April. We've ordered a road study from LCPC. And they will be putting out, uh, equipment that will. Give us counts as to, and the equipment can tell if it's a car or a truck or a whatever. Uh, and so that'll give us some statistical information to go with. But I think that the heavy, heavy traffic is corporate traffic. Like Pepsi and there, uh, there's some beer companies that go plow through there. Um, I think that they will adhere to in ordinance. Because they're. The logging trucks may not, um, in others, but I think we can make a dent that way.
It might help to just get pressure on V-Trans, more people. And just to sweat towards.
Yeah, yeah, and you almost want the corporates to go to V-Trans and say, hey, you know, we gotta. We gotta do an eight mile out of the way.
Could help on that.
And to try to help on that side, but in order to do something like that, we would have to. Because of the way the road is set up between two towns, uh, we would have, they would have to be cooperative. Do something.
We got close enough. Few years ago, so that. They were actually looking for land to put a new town, they figured they'd have to add a new town garage, a small garage, but. The truck had to, to handle that extra, so they were looking for land, merges to put a garage on, and it hit. Somewhere it hit a snag, and it had to have something to do with the money, and it just. That was as close as we got.
Because we, I know seventy-one, we try, we try, and we. Right, so your regional planning commission, they get, um, transportation funds, and one of their duties is. For free to do, um, these, um. You know, traffic counts.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. I can talk to people over there. Cameras on our side, so we could get the, the whole.
Right.
You know, what was going on. No, I think we could, we could make a case to the regional people. I don't know how our representative, well, she'd be. Keep an eye on her heels to take that one or not, who knows?
Talking to Dan after her.
Yeah.
You have one? Sam's, what's her first name? Kate now? I think we could get her on board.
Yeah, I think the more legislators we get, the more better as well.
And, um.
I'm sure we can have Bobby Starr, he's, he's been really supportive of projects like ours.
We didn't, we don't, we didn't.
It's good, but.
I have Rich Westman. Um, and, uh, also one of. And, uh, member of the. Memorial Planning Commission is on the Transportation Committee in the House. And if you read the law, it really isn't, it really is up to the legislature. To make that decision. It is not up to V-Trans.
No, V-Trans can say no, which effectively they have.
You can go around it.
The law says that then it has to be introduced as a bill, and the only. Entity that can approve this, uh, a road change like this is the General Assembly. So.
Is that how they did fifteen A and fifteen C?
Probably. At some point, if V-Trans says, yes, we support this. It automatically goes to General Assembly for a vote. If V-Trans says, no, we don't. Then your legislators have to produce a bill. Now try to put them through that.
The bill's probably three, four years.
It's not gonna happen overnight, but I think, um. Putting some effort in, at least we try, um.
They don't put enough, put enough state aid to. For us to lose that would, it still wouldn't hurt us as far as the amount of money we spent on that road. Infrastructure, for, you know, ridges, other, the river.
Right.
All the stuff that we do there, it's, it's a lot of money.
Well, you see, the biggest problem is most of the bread companies, a lot of your beer companies, they're coming out of Arlington area. So instead of going all the way to Hardwood, and then, uh. Fourteen, this is quite a cutoff, about fifteen miles, and when you start talking. Two gallons of diesel at six dollars a gallon.
Not unusual to see an FBI truck sneaking through the area sometimes. And those aren't my trucks.
Quite a number of their trucks.
Yeah. If they go into, who's that?
Yeah, they're all in trash.
Oh, they're going to the town hall street? Yeah.
Richard and I was right on the hook.
If you don't slow down, there is a hole.
No, someone's slowing down out in the middle of field. I go and ask them, gee, can I call a cop?
Big city garage.
The only good thing is, is there's no trees or big rocks up in that field.
No, I would say that anything we can do to help you, we need more than that. We're actually needing with this V-Trans for annual metering. A couple of weeks, so. Seventeen, and I'd be happy to just merge some with them again, but it's a different. I think Jason and Eric, we both last time.
Are you going to District? Is we're in District Eight? No, we've just moved to six, so we were. Six, eight, six. Yeah.
So I, anything that, you know, if you.
Would you want to schedule, uh, one of those, um. Vehicle counting things?
Yeah, I can take care of that.
You know, just.
I'll get that set up. They're probably starting to set those up now.
Right on.
I didn't realize they could tell the difference between trucks and tires, that's.
Yes, they can, yeah.
It's the pressure. It's the pressure, okay, good.
And they count the space between, uh, you know, the wheels.
Yeah, so they're not, I'll make it regular, so.
Maybe it is.
Not they can.
But they can identify very accurately what it is.
I'd be curious though, I would, yeah, the trap. You, as you drive the road, you, you, you can see a lot of, you can tell a lot of stories about what's coming up through there.
I remember when it was still dirt road too.
Just barely. And they told, when they told that, and it went away in dirt, they went down two, three feet, and they hauled a lot of stone from. The Johnson, what used to be Netto's, they hauled a lot of stone. The people that did the road were different towns.
So Wolkett did it with their own money?
I remember the Craftsbury section up there by, um, used to be the big farm.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah. But that was way down, I remember coming up through it, something, something. It was, they don't get down long ways, but it's still.
We can't, we can't keep paying them, so.
Right, cracks up. With the erosion alone, the wild branches unpredictable.
It's not unusual to see them in six to eight feet in a year's time.
Right.
Well, it keeps splitting. Almost taken out of the green field here.
I remember standing there, one of the first years I was in Slade, remember, Everett, DeMar was something, me and. State guys were all down there, it was right after flood. Everett's, by God, I said, we ought to take a TD fifteen and just go straight to Wolkett Village. Everett just wanted to. Your problem when it comes to. Everett and no one's. State guys.
No, imagine not. Okay, so I guess if you want to schedule that, and then we'll be in touch when ours is done. I'm gonna just.
And we can copy you on any correspondence that we have. And you can.
Get back from that during the evening.
Yeah.
So I do think it's gonna take the two towns.
Yeah.
To make this work.
And all the representatives.
Yes, yeah. Great. I mean, there, you take all of that stuff coming out of tentative counting, and they expect that we're gonna just eat it all up here. We'll take their trash and we'll take their trucks. We'll take their trash and we'll take their trucks, so it's. It's time they started recognizing that we're Vermont, this is still a good part of Vermont.
Good.
Let's just, we need to go in.
Yeah. Well, we thank you for taking. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
We discussed America, we stick around. You have more requests?
No, we haven't. Yeah.
Three, sixteen, thirteen, fourteen. It's all, one, not all committed, but yeah, a lot of this right now, now, so. People seem to appreciate it. But you put out pretty money.
Yeah, I'm kind of afraid to, there's a little, some left and I'm just kind of afraid. It's like, it's nice evidence there.
We kind of had for the, to get the most common people, which is the town, fire the homeless rules, so. Half went, kind of cut it in half right there, and the other half went to the, a bunch of smaller. Trucks.
The saplings, right?
Saplings, throw a bit, take a little.
Just doing the college a little bit, well, just because they're doing building that. Supposedly it's gonna be. From the guys. Community care center.
Well, someday, I love it. The forest, we are buying a forest.
You buying a forest?
Yeah.
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 Everybody down there wanting to.
I seven thirty years old now, so.
That's a nice piece.
In a real trailer.
We're getting a school.
For twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, well, um, it's not into art, but.
Not at all.
But then we have to be.
Yeah.
But a well-maintained forest can pretty well paper itself, yes, yeah. Put that up, farce is working with you on it?
Well, part of the requirement is that you have to have a stewardship plan, so we've had a committee for over a year working on that. Um, finding out. People in Wokeville, wanna see, get placed there?
Oh, I know, you're gonna have someone that wants this, and then there's no one on the, yes, what is it?
Well, they have to write the plan, we always purchase it because uh rural rivers is. They have a conservation agreement on it.
And we do have a question from the committee, Mike Green.
Okay. Over time, one of, um, Jenny, do they got a bunch of mine that was, they purchased it, they took. Take from that, it's got some bike trails and water trails. They've had a little conflict between, they allow public content and things, and it's been a few. Instruments that nobody likes the guns, and so they, those have been some problems, but other than that, it's worked out really well.
Well, sorry, all the other problems, and then one they, they would say.
Stuff everybody likes. Yeah, there's a lot of different tendencies there.
Yeah.
Opposing each other.
Yeah.
A lot of these, I mean, they don't like. Don't want animals. They have a horse in there. No, they don't want, they don't want animals. No dogs, no horses.
Well, the horse will turn on the mouth, you know?
Yeah. But they're, people are, we don't want all this. And all the ones that want to walk. They don't want the common post.
We didn't turn that one off for a time. Yeah. Guy was gonna make a dog park, thirty thousand dollars worth there for money per dog park. That was.
Okay, we're gonna move on, if that's okay. Uh, we have a request for signage for the rail trail. So I sent it, yeah, you came, um. This fall, there's interesting questions, because did you get, did it have this law in the package? There is a picture of a sign that they want um. Will be right up here, um, on the school street and railroad street. It has a long valley round trail, which points here, they have a parking sign, a bike sign, and a snowmobile sign. And um I know we had a discussion about. Snowmobiles parking here because it will use up all the space, and we talked about the ball field. Keeping that open and having a. Snowmobiles park at the ball field parking lot and getting on the trail right there by. Garage. So I asked her about that, and basically she told me that um they weren't gonna pay for. A snowmobile sign down by the ball field because it was just seasonal. So I don't know what you want to do about it. The other thing, while I was talking to her, I reached out to her about leasing this land. Starting with discussion about leasing the land on the other side of the trailhead.
Right.
She's on vacation this week, so when she comes back, we'll probably get some of that. Discussion, um, so I don't know what you want to do. She basically said that um. They're reaching out to you to determine, does the town agree for the signs to be installed by V Trans at the proposed location? Is the town willing to maintain the sign long term? And if so, with sort of permitting process, you may have, we don't have. But.
They're just the one sign?
Just the one sign. A lot of picture of parking bike and snowmobile on it.
See, they'll, I'm learning fifteen, right?
Yeah, but they don't have to ask.
Right, the one they're asking for is right here.
Right.
Yeah. Cause she, when she talked to me, she said two signs, and so that's what I just asked.
I did not see two signs, did you?
No, no, I mean, she called me the first time, and I, um, she said it looked like they were in a.
I also asked her, where did you get her signs? Because, real corrections, cause they have four twenty nine times shot. So she said that um they're gonna put these up to bid, but um A L T is gonna have a sign shot. But we can't use it.
Jennifer, yeah. Someone's gonna try them out. Try out new signs. So are they looking for?
She's looking, lots of the questions, do we agree for the sign to be installed? Right out here, and are we going to maintain the sign long term, like if the flower hits, if we need to replace it?
Yeah.
Like we do with our street signs.
Well, it's on this side of the fence, I don't see how they're gonna hit it.
I'm just.
I mean, I would put it next to the. I'm crazy enough to hit it.
So if they already say go ahead, then we will have all this, the snowmobile season will be over shortly, and we have um. Almost a year to decide what we're gonna do with snowmobile. Prox, so we'll turn this for parking.
I think we should go ahead with, uh. Because the. Not everybody is aware that there's rail trail access right here. They do see that there's access down by the county, and that's where you don't want them to go. Cause the parking, I mean, they do. They've got, see, they park right in front of the, front of the garage.
Even though it says. So I think that we need to think about some serious signage, I mean, if we want them to park down there. You know, and it would have to be a seasonal sign that we put up.
Right.
There, um. And maybe we need better signage, um, I don't know, doesn't it say no parking in front of, um?
Mm-hmm.
On the garage?
Yes, interesting. Same with parking.
So I'll tell her. Yeah, I'll tell her all day, if it's our view, and um. We will work at the town meeting on thinking about.
Can we?
If we're gonna have these.
Are we gonna pick out what style?
Um.
Do you want it the long way?
Ask her that, did she?
No, I, I prefer the one that's in the red. Box.
Well, I think that's the one she wants. It needs to have.
You didn't state, she just, it's okay to put the sign out there, but what? Are you gonna have it this long, are you gonna have it this way?
I don't know, that's the one you want, you want the.
I would allow. Right.
Right. Um. E nine one one signs. We did with bike. So I put forward this workday quote. Um, last week for three nine thousand. And um. And this week I asked. Bert to try to get some other quotes. To see if he could find anything cheaper. If this was the best.
So, um. Yeah, kind of very difficult to, to get quotes, especially on posts. Um, so we do have a, a, uh. A bid here from a company called Safety Home Address. Uh, and it's for nine hundred and fifty uh nine one one panels. Uh, we have. Including, including the numbers, including the holes, everything that, that this. Other bid is for, and the total came from fifteen thousand five ten. Um, but it did not include the post. And I could not get anybody to grid a quote on post. Uh, it appears that there's a national supply chain problem there. Just nobody has, nobody, and even this group, which does huge volume, has to wait what, eight weeks or something?
Yeah, I thought it was fourteen.
Fourteen weeks, um. So anyway, the, the best uh. Alternative, what are you doing with this system?
Yeah, so he quoted fifteen thousand, ten dollars, um, workday was fourteen thousand seventy eight dollars. They do have the holes, and it is on both sides.
So that's a better quote.
Right, and they can provide the um. They can provide the uh U channel posts.
Yeah.
And I need to tell them tomorrow when we're to go.
I think, personally, I think it is. We should do this, do it now, because if we wait, the situation's gonna get worse.
Yeah, right now it's very hard to get breakaway posts in the highway.
Yeah.
When you put them on, they're just a. The flag like that, they come with. You stick the numbers on, they're very adhesive, and they don't peel off. Reflective in that way, and you don't have to have each number printed, it's, it just comes on the back of letters and you can put your. Yeah, we've been doing that. Ten, eighteen years. Started now, we bought it off from Park Merrill. I'm not sure what she does, or she does over there.
Yeah, I've seen that that is an option.
Yeah, we don't use posts, we just, people put it on the mailbox.
Yeah, that's, that's the way it is now, and we'll, it's just on request. Um, this particular project is for the town to. Proactively put nine hundred and fifty of these out. Um, and so the, the idea of putting the numbers on ourselves was. Elmore did a project like this.
Yeah.
For my car.
Yeah.
Molded one, two years ago, ours. It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
I imagine it'll take a few years to get them all out, but at least we'll have them. Um, with the article moving.
With the emergency services being as thin as they are, it's, you've got to be. You know, very opportunistic, find new spirits, okay?
Absolutely. So. Do you need a different question? I'll go ahead and make a question, and then it's probably except for the.
Workday.
Workspace.
Stay.
Second time, I'm waiting.
Do you have any comments? Of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, preparing. This is for posts as well, or he has the signs?
Post and signs.
Okay, so then the total for post and signs was? Oh, we have nine hundred and forty two signs and nine hundred and fifty posts. I ordered more because. Um, you can't get them, and I'd rather have extras. Um, twenty nine thousand, one hundred and seventy three dollars and sixty nine cents. So do you need to talk more on the mowing of the north hook at Brockwood?
Um, no, the, the reason I put that up here was, um. I had a phone call, he was in, he was curious whether we were gonna put out a. Notice for bids for mowing this year, you know, actually, and we were, and when we, yeah, so. Um, and. Uh, he was curious as to why. We chose to brush off the field as opposed to mowing. Um, cause his argument is, his comment was that. People are using that, um, it's not being used by organized sports or anything of that nature, but. He says families are out there using it now and again. Um, and he was actually gonna come to this meeting to, to propose that he continued to mow that at no cost because. He lives up there, that's important to him. I mean, it's nine years.
We know his name.
Yes, he did the. Actually, I don't know if it would be, he did the seeding for us this summer. Um. On the, uh, East River, where we did. Place over our cap there. Pretty call that, seeding the.
The hydro?
Hydro seeding, yeah, he did the hydro seeding. And he lives.
I'll have to.
Yeah, he lives on the road somewhere. But he'll be coming, I, I was hoping he, he said he was gonna show, but, um, I'll pull out his name, and I know that when the newspaper gets, he'll definitely be. So, so that's. We actually moved the agenda, the coin drop request for justice for dogs, um. We can, that's a moot point, right now, because you need a state permit to. Uh. To do that as well as a town permission to do that. Uh, so Justice for Dogs went to the state, and their insurance requirements were. Beyond what. Justice for Dogs provision, so they. They've given up on the idea, um. That's really. For that state.
Maybe they can do it on the north hook there. Maybe they can do it on the North Hook there.
But yeah, the insurance requirements are very high. Um you know, this is all, what Justice for Dogs is trying to do is be proactive about. Memorial kennels on Barfield Road, because that is the kennel that will take. Empty, empty dogs. Um so if they're picked up, the dogs picked up by the sheriff or Dean picks one up. That's the go to place and uh the prices were always reasonable, he does it for the entire county. But retiring, shutting down, and now we have nothing. And we have no place to bring dogs, and so Justice for Dogs is trying to fill that hole. Um but uh they're the short on meaning.
I think they're trying to buy it or to run it. I'm not sure.
Well, they tried to, but the family of the family is taking over the land and they have other plans to go land, so it's not.
I'm assuming uh up there, they're trying to find more focus on keeping running each dump transfer station up there, running.
They do have a transfer station.
That is major, money maker, I believe, up there.
Yeah, the phosphate, that's the transfer. Um so that's the problem, and if there is any ideas of dogs that have it. I don't know, with a place for these dogs, because it will become. There already is. Dean picks up dogs and he takes them home.
Yes, they might love some for that.
Is there a place he could take dogs? I don't know, we just, we've just hired a new employee, where she's gonna go. She has a small kennel in her place, so.
We might have to contact.
She's doing it to one of the towns besides us.
Okay, we'll move on to, how about we move on to the um unit, the orders to pay off the. Loan loan for the Perkoro Culver to guard four hundred thousand. We received um. So I could requisition and ask for seventy five percent of what FEMA owes. Um on that. Which we received three hundred seventy three dollars, three hundred seventy three thousand two hundred twenty one dollars and thirty cents. But our loan is four hundred two thousand one sixty four thirty two. We still, so we're short twenty eight thousand nine hundred forty three dollars and two cents. So we pay this off, where are we getting? Twenty eight thousand. Ten thousand.
So basically, um. You have another sixteen thousand home, which had to do with another percentage of that. You remember sixteen, seven, thirty, thirty something? So total in all, I received almost four hundred thousand to pay it, so the only thing we basically, we wouldn't pay is the interest. Which is going to go into what we pay for interest each year, which we budgeted.
Right, I'm just thinking like we're bookkeeping those, so. That sixteen thousand and this three seventy three are categorized as um. You know, FEMA money received to pay. At some point, that interest needs to come out of. FEMA money when we get it, it shouldn't show up as.
But I'm assuming there'll be more coming in. You have another part coming in. But I wanted to pay this off. Before we went much higher on the interest.
Right, no, I I totally agree, I just wanted to make sure that bookkeeping was right. So I'm gonna pass this around, feels good to be able to pay it off this time. The other thing I have is the. Finding a grant agreement for the School Street Bridge, um I've read it and read it and read it. So basically, what it's saying is that um. The final construction cost that's big with federal funds is gonna pay a hundred percent. I was saying that um. Any non participating costs. Will be eighty federal, fifteen state, and five in this town.
Isn't that if we wanted the walkway that looks good?
So I spent a lot of time asking, um finding that, um and. You know, there are things in here about moving utilities and whether we had to pay for them, he said no. Moving utilities would be part of the cost of. The construction, um. We talked about, uh and then you have to get some kind of permit if any of the, any new utilities go into the. Railway, and remember, we want to put the horse name under the bridge. Um but he said that we didn't need a permit for that because it was a municipal utility. My other concern was um. Was the sidewalk gonna be a participating cost, and he said yes. Um a non participating one, so he said it was.
Wasn't it, they quoted about six thousand?
I was trying to remember, sidewalk added on the six thousand four hundred seventy dollars. I could be wrong, I'm missing, I'm still estimating, I figured out today was um. The preliminary engineering, we have to pay five percent. And that's six hundred eighty eight thousand. The right of way, we have to pay five percent, that's forty thousand, and then with a sidewalk. I'm figuring our portion is about thirty seven, forty thousand.
But our sidewalk was just part of the roadway, we weren't having a.
No, we had a choice, when we were here, I had a choice here, um hope it added on, um. They added on, uh this is. Without sidewalk option, that's the whole cost of the bridge, and with the sidewalk option.
And that's the cost of the bridge.
Okay, for adding that extra two feet, they're gonna charge six thousand dollars.
Total cost of what, three million? No. Not for us.
No, it was six. Two thousand, no, six million two hundred thirty thousand six hundred eighty five dollars.
We all believe that five hundred thousand dollars worth pretty good.
He just put in a box over it.
A little over half a billion.
Same place by engineering, that's six thousand.
You said the three year old, we're gonna get forty thousand dollars.
Well, that forty thousand would come out of our capital progress, that's where it's.
But you have over three hundred thousand.
So I just wanted to get permission from the board to go ahead and sign this, I've only been waiting since October.
It's all isn't bad.
No.
Six thousand dollars for the other two feet, but still. I know, I think we should definitely go ahead and execute this.
Okay, I'll do that.
Before they change their mind.
Yes, he didn't write it.
Well, don't quote me though, please, I I mean, there might be other costs in that thing than than.
Thing is, is the bridge now. Ride out the way you're going to, you'll see coming from Harvard, the traffic, you can't see. Now it's gonna be on top of that. So it might better have access, you know.
We have a fire truck goes out there, you can't see it.
Oh, I guess I used to have thought. I don't know how many, I was like. Over here, that distance, you think someone over there by the cemetery would have someone here what's going on? But it's like, oh gee, I can beat them.
Dolan. Dolan, we had a question for you about town meeting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um yes, what can I answer for you?
We just wondered about a town meeting and are you all set with the setup?
You need to fix your internet, Dolan.
Uh well, the main reason I.
No, so Dolan, tomorrow night is a meeting up at the school for the school budget. And I wondered if you could meet me up there and we could go over. What the setup would look up like for town meeting. It's very. I might have to call him back.
I'm having a little bit of.
So why don't you and Dolan work it out, alright?
But then they put in that new ground case.
Why, Dolan?
I'm having some, I'm having some internet trouble, I'm having some trouble hearing you. Um so what time are you guys going into school on Monday afternoon? Eleven thirty, okay, um I I'm available. I'm available then, and the rest of the day I can help with other projects as well as setting up my system.
Okay, thank you, Dolan.
Okay, is that all?
Yep, Belinda will be in touch with you.
Okay, great, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to get there tonight, I just had a little trouble getting out of Canada today.
So the um town meeting budget discussion. Now, there was one question I, in our budget that I. I had a question about, and it had to do with listeners. That we put eleven thousand dollars in the budget for. And then we voted to pull out of that agreement with Johnson and High Park. And they they are gonna pull out with the planning commission, and then two towns are just going to have their own agreement between them. So we're out, and so we don't need the eleven thousand, um what are we gonna do with it?
You could go to change the budget from the floor.
They want to do. And what they want to amend the budget at town meeting, um but they want to know.
How was that, using the capital funds?
Not quite one cent.
I think we should just amend it. And tell me. They shouldn't object to us not needing money.
Or you can put it in a different category.
But just, I just, percy it, just resolve. I don't know, with the way it is, or, well, it did bring it down from the three point, what was it? Four, five, you know, it's bringing down to three. So it increased. We're all grass for guest drives at this point anyways, maybe it would look good.
The other thing is, we need to think about, and we're not gonna do it tonight, or probably not in our next meeting, but after that, we need to think about. Um Joey's truck. Um and our equipment schedule, and we put a hundred thousand in for our equipment fund. Um but because we were going to buy off, pay off the what? What we're gonna do.
Excavator.
They're all the same to me. Pay off excavator. For our funds, but we can't do that because it's uh it's dead, uh it's a different debt. So we need to think about um that whole thing.
But you can buy a new vehicle with it.
You could.
Or put a percentage towards it.
We could, but I just wanted to think. In general, we'll we'll revisit it.
We'll get paid enough.
You guys will get paid.
Yeah, I mean, we really should, just get the station, the the truck is following Chance Truck, it's. We have town trucks there.
Two thousand sixteen.
And it's on the schedule to be placed in twenty four. We won't have any savings, I mean, the whole idea of this new equipment schedule was to save on repairs.
You just put ten thousand in truck. Through a three year old truck. The one we just got rid of, I'd hate to tell you how much we put into that. Yeah, we're kind of going to go to lease. Because it keeps everything under warranty at all times. But you're getting, in in order to switch from the ownership to a lease model, there's gonna be a bump in the revenue, and that's. There's gonna be a spike, and that's what we're talking about.
Well, we should find out what our trading would be.
Yeah. Would be better than Chance Truck.
Town we know is a couple of years to get a truck anyway.
They don't like to do much trade in trying that, we had one that we traded down, they gave us fifty five thousand. And that was in March, maybe February, and the new truck didn't come until December. By that time, I think you left the body, and you weren't just sure if the body was gonna stay straight up or.
It's gonna come this way or that way.
They weren't very happy, they needed their fifty five thousand dollars.
The one we traded, totally seized up. It took us a year and a half to get a new truck. So in the meantime, this one seized completely, and when they came to take it up, we had to get a, uh you know. The excavator out.
They sold it some ways in Maine. But I think we only have.
Do we have anything else?
Just. My counter's at seven P M Tuesday night, because we're not using the tabulator, guys, we're count by the end.
Oh, on that note, I emailed you. Other people, I emailed you, uh services, my email went to one of the other volunteers. Couldn't figure out how to send it directly to you. So I'm available, but I don't know who got the message.
Well, now, so I'll see what's done on Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Alex, can you come?
I mean, yeah.
That night?
Yeah.
Okay. Her?
As long as I don't have to count higher than one.
Yeah. It's our first year doing office by Australian ballot, we're choosing.
We're asking for that, actually. What's your, how many, explain that, and what are you, you figure that it's gonna be more participation, or?
Well, we received a petition.
Okay.
And, uh, we already held the election. Um, Jim? Because we couldn't hold it during COVID, because you can't. If you, if you, if you don't have a, if you usually have a floor meeting, you couldn't ask that question. With Australian ballot, so we had to push it out. And you have to vote, so it's gonna come into effect, it's, I don't know, maybe.
We're asking for the next, this meeting, so.
Do you vote any, any by ballot? Or? See, we do our school budget by ballot, so now we are on the screen.
So we're, we're fully out, it's never lost.
Yeah. It's three times for us, we figure this year only give about an hour, it's, it's.
My mother is worried about finishing before lunch, and then the school band's warned for one o'clock, so we made them a gap there, and we lose everybody, but it's. They're earning about twenty-five dollars from the town meeting, but they owe four million dollars for school meeting. And, and it's only happening there, she said.
Which is, uh, last year, we, oh, we, we had our budget, it's global, uh, it got through down three. And then four, it got through.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion that we adjourn, select for meeting. Seven, twenty something, yeah. While we outside of stuff.
Oh, yes.
Follow my David.
Hi.
Hi. You know what, I'm just, it's beyond so much years ago with the, with town meeting.